Good evening again, everyone, and welcome back to the Selectmen's Meeting for Tuesday, December 4th, 2018. Please rise as we pledge allegiance to the flag. Mr. President?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the man standing, please, for a moment of silence for George Herbert Walker Bush, our 41st president who passed away recently. Thank you. First thought of the business. This is number one.
Number two.
Number two, town administrator and interim town administrator update. Marcy's four-month period ran out yesterday, and we have to make a decision what we want to do. What would the board's pleasure be?
I think I'd like to make a motion that we extend Marcy for four more months as the interim town administrator.
Effective beginning Thursday?
Effective beginning Thursday morning. And we also, I think we should also look to establish a search committee or a permanent town administrator.
Just to win another time.
So the first motion is to extend Marcy for four months as the interim town administrator effective Thursday morning.
I'll make a second.
Your motion and a second to extend Ms. Birmingham, all in favor? That's unanimous.
When I make a motion to direct the interim town administrator to work with Attorney Clifford to, at the draft, a, like an RFP for an executive search from so we can begin working, or to fill the position of the town administrator for the long term until, you know, really do what needs of, what our goals are as a board and as a town, and what our needs are relating to the charter, and how that could all be reflective in a town administrator search, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor? That is a vote, unanimous.
Mr. Clifford?
I just wanted to address the point, and I'm sure it's going to come up.
Oh, yeah.
The town charter contains a provision that you may appoint an interim town administrator for a four-month period. And from there, you can appoint permanent town administrator for a one-year probation followed by three-year renewals. There is much about the situation that the board finds itself in and the town finds itself in that is unusual, to say the least, that the charter could not have anticipated, or the people that drafted it could not have anticipated. So obviously, it's unusual that we would have appointed Ms. Birmingham as one four-month stint, for one four-month stint as interim town administrator, but obviously, the circumstances, the board having decided on the issue of the current town administrator's status at its last meeting, it's appropriate, we're going to need at least four months to do another search. So we need to put somebody in that position, and therefore, you've asked me, and I think it's perfectly appropriate and legal within the charter to appoint Ms. Birmingham for a second four-month interim assignment.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John Clifford. All righty, community announcements. When do we get under community announcements, anything? Oh, yeah, you're going to read that. Here you go.
Under community announcements?
There you go.
Okay.
I knew I was looking for it.
So on behalf of Rockland Friends, Pam Murphy and Kathy Stewart, they asked me to read this letter. We apologize for not being able to be there in person, but we have asked the Board of Selectmen to make a brief statement on behalf of Rockland Friends. Our list is too long, and there really is no way to thank everybody that chipped in this year, no matter what format, to make this year's holiday stroll not only bigger and better for bigs, but also our biggest and maybe best one yet. The cooperation from the town departments, including the Board of Selectmen, was so overwhelming. We are humbled and so very much appreciative. Going into the stroll preparations this year was tough without our committee member, Bob Biggins, but you all stepped up to the plate and made it a time that we are sure Bob was very pleased with. When you have selectmen serving charter, superintendent of schools Alan Cron and his quartet belting out Christmas tunes, and all of the other amazing talent, entertainment, and participation that we did, you know everything is going to be all right, and that as a town, we are united and moving forward, because that is what we do. It was about 15 or 20 years ago, at our benefit, for little Bartek Chamolinski, that the Channel Five news reporter first phrased that Rockland is a little town with a big heart. Rockland Friends has always believed this to be true, and on last Saturday night, it was proven once again. Rockland Friends thanks each and every one of you and wish you all the happiest of holidays.
Thank you. All right. Next up on the agenda would be minutes, A of the open session minutes of November 30th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any discussion at all? Hearing none, all in favor? That's a vote. Next would be the executive session minutes of November 20th, 2018.
Make a motion to approve, but not to be released until our metos are settled.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? I think Karen wanted to buy her hair, but...
That's okay.
All in favor? That's a vote. Next would be license renewals. Ms. Nyman, would you like to read them for us, please?
So first, we have the common victualers. Rockland House of Pizza, 197 Union Street, Monero Steakhouse, 371 Union Street, Anita Marie's Coffee Shop, 349 Union Street, Greek House of Pizza, 343 Center Ave., and Seasons Cafe, 938 Hingham Street. Under entertainment, we have Monero Steakhouse, 371 Union Street. Class One, Leisure Woods, Hometown Homes, 31 Leisure Woods Drive, Live Oaks, Hometown Homes, 680 Union Street. For Class Two, we have Fader Motors, 15 Bishop Lane, Lou's Autobody, 577 Market Street, and Tres Petroleum at 104 Market Street.
Make a motion to approve, pending all obligations having been met.
Second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor? That's approval of all the licenses that are on the page. All right. Next, we have an appointment, zoning board of appeals, alternate three-year term, Tim Hayes, 35 Dearing Square, C.E.A. Come on up, Tim. Right over there at the podium, tell everybody who you are and where you live, please.
Good evening. I'm Tim Hayes. I live at 35 Dearing Square.
And what made you want to get into the zoning board?
Well, no good deed goes unpunished, I'm sure, so, no. I've stood on this side of hearings for the past 20 years, and moving to town in June, I wanted to become involved and participate, and I've spent a lot of time presenting before boards over the years, and thought that some of my experience would be of use on the other side.
So what expertise would you say you bring to the board?
Well, I've had 20 years, I'm now currently a full-time real estate agent, Keller Williams, the local office in Hanover, but for 20 years, I've been an architectural project manager. So I've done everything from working on the Ritz-Carlton Towers in Boston, to a lot of residential projects up and down the coast and throughout the state. So I've presented at everything from conservation commissions to zoning boards across the state.
Make a motion that we...
Anybody else first?
No, I want to approve him before he leaves, so...
Yeah, that's right, that's right. Come through it, yeah.
Thanks for stepping up. Great to see another new face.
We got a motion?
Oh, second.
We got a motion and a second to appoint?
Thank you.
All in favor? That's unanimous.
Tim, thank you very much. Appreciate you stepping up.
Very nice.
Like to see you guys stepping up.
Next, we have superintendent, school superintendent Alan Cron, his update from the state of the schools.
Hello.
And don't let it go to your head that you were the only one in the thank you letter. You guys sang like Cnereys.
We had a good time. It was a lot of fun.
It was a lot of fun.
It was a really nice night.
Yeah, perfect.
Glad to have this podium to lean on.
New screen?
Yes.
I'm going to break it in for you.
There you go.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you all for having me here tonight. I asked to be on this meeting. I think it's been a while since I've given any kind of state of the union to the town other than school committee meetings. And since we just got our MCAS scores back, I think it's a good time to report on how schools are doing, but fundamentally, here to say thank you to the town and the Board of Selectmen for your support, and hopefully, to say thank you with some results that are very positive as well. So I'm going to show you a lot of information. This really is sort of a public record. It's not meant for you to catch everything that you're going to see, because there's way too much. I violate every PowerPoint rule known to man, but there's just a lot of data that I need to share with you. So first, I'm going to talk about MCAS, and MCAS has changed very much this year. Last year's 2018 MCAS, grades four through eight were tested on computer, and grade three was tested on paper. Our new MCAS is called MCAS 2.0, and that was given in ELA in math. The idea is that it's supposed to be slightly more rigorous this year than it has been in the past. The legacy MCAS is the old, what we're referring to is the old MCAS, and it's still being given in grades five, eight, and nine in science, so we're still using the legacy MCAS. Some accountability system changes. The targets for 2018 are based on the previous year. We, each school and district gets made aware of their lowest performing student subgroup, and then we work at that, and we're still comparing ourself to ourself and comparing ourselves to others, and I'll talk a little bit more about comparing to others in a little bit. So what is MCAS 2.0? It's an updated version of the nearly 20-year-old MCAS exam. It focuses on critical thinking, application, and the ability to make connections. It's designed to be given on a computer, that's substantial, that's very important. It's based on the PARC test, and it was first given in the spring of 2017, and it will replace all older legacy tests. So what's different? First of all, it's designed to be given on computer. Writing in response to text in every grade, technology-enhanced items, multi-part questions, that's very important, items designed to measure above the bar, this is also a change. The old MCAS was always described as a minimum. We want every student to receive or to achieve at a minimum level, they considered it almost a floor, but the new MCAS is designed to be a little more challenging, and so they're saying it's designed to measure above the bar. Built-in accessibility features for students with special needs. It's still untimed, still focused on the frameworks, the Massachusetts State frameworks. Here is, again, way too much information, but the legacy MCAS was scored using advanced, proficient, needs improvement, and warning. The MCAS 2.0 is scored using exceeding, meeting, partially meeting, or not meeting. So what I'm going to show you now are some highlights from Rockland's scores, beginning with grade three. I'm particularly interested in having all students in exceeding or meeting expectations. That's our goal. So students in grade three exceeding or meeting expectations. In English Language Arts, we were up 10% in grade three from 2017 to 2018. Math was up 4%. School highlights, the Esten School, the reading scores were up 14%, and their math scores 10%. Memorial Park Reading was up 8%, math was flat. Jefferson Reading was up 16%, and math 4%. Grade four, we saw a 2% drop in English Language Arts, but a 4% improvement in math. Esten's math was up 7%, Memorial Park 3%, and Jefferson 4%. So again, I'm going very fast, but people at home can always tune back in in this presentation. If anyone wants it, I'm happy to email it to you. That goes to all you at home, too. Grade five, grade five saw a decrease in math scores and an increase in English Language Arts, so math was down 2%, and English Language Arts was up 13%. Rogers Middle School, grade six, grade six saw a decrease in math scores and English Language Arts scores, both went down last year. Grade seven, exceeding or meeting expectations. Students in grade seven improved in math and were flat in ELA, so plus 6% in math, and ELA was flat. Grade eight, students in grade eight improved in both math and English Language Arts. Maths was up 7%, English Language Arts up 18%. So science, again, is the legacy MCAS. It was given at grades five, eight, and 10. All grades showed improvement over the previous year. Grade five was up 3%, 7% for grade eight, and 8% for grade 10. It's really grade nine and 10, it's biology, so some students take it in 10th grade, most take it in 9th grade. Science, grade five, so what I'm showing you here are a little more detailed. What we're trying to do is we're hoping for trend lines like that. So you're trying to, oh, I just did something I didn't want to do. You're trying to improve, increase your number of advanced and proficient, and decrease your needs improvement, warning, and failing. Now, some people might look at a slide like this and go, but wait a second, Alan, why are there so many needs improvements, warning, and failing? It's important to look at state average, because each grade is sort of different. Some tests are more difficult than others. You'll notice that in the high school level, the scores are much higher generally, but if you look at state average and you know you're in the ballpark, our CPI is above state average, and our proficient and advanced are right in the ballpark, right at state average. But most importantly, our trend line is positive, and we're increasing every year. Grade eight, science, very similar trend. Last year, they had an excellent year, and we're beginning to see more and more students in advanced and proficient, which is what we're looking for, and again, that positive trend line. Biology, grade 10, here's an excellent example. All of a sudden, you see the vast majority of your students in advanced and proficient, and you go, wow, look how great we're doing. But again, go down to state average, and you'll see the state average is also there. So it's all relative, is what I'm trying to say. But again, 8% improvement in advanced and proficient, and a very positive trend line. They've worked very, very hard at this at the high school. High school math and English Language Arts. In math, there was a 2% increase in the number of students achieving proficient and advanced. Number of students reaching advanced increased by 3%. There was a slight decrease in MCAS scores in ELA, but it's misleading, because when you're scoring that well, there's a sort of a glass ceiling effect when you have so many students already in proficient and advanced. A 2- to 5% swing is really significant, it's insignificant statistically. But math, grade 10, you can see the vast majority of our students in advanced and proficient, and when you go down to state average, you can see it's a similar trend across the state. But very strong, very strong math department, very strong English Language Arts. Here we have 92% of our students scoring in advanced and proficient. Although they declined by 3%, I would still say it was an improvement over last year because of this advance, the number of advanced students hitting 51% and 41% proficient. Proficient really is your bar, so very good score. So these are just some highlights, the things that we're exceptionally proud of. Esten School had a great year last year. Third grade saw a 14% bump in exceeding and meeting expectations in English Language Arts, grade three. Grade three math saw a 10-point jump at Esten School. Teachers are to be commended at the Esten School, they did a tremendous job, and students, obviously, they're the ones who took the test, but the teachers had a little something to do with it. Jefferson School growth, so let me explain growth quickly. When they establish a growth target, they take your school, and they compare you with a cohort of similar schools around the state, and then they establish a benchmark for the following year. How you do in relation to that benchmark is how they classify your growth. Jefferson School was recognized this year as one of the 52 top schools in the state for their growth. So out of the 350 school districts in the state, they were one of 52 schools to be recognized for their tremendous growth last year.
Who do you attribute that growth to?
I attribute it to full-day kindergarten, for one, that started a handful of years ago, and I think we're starting to see those pops. I also think that there's just some great teaching going on in kindergarten, first grade...
Congratulations to Michelle and her staff.
Absolutely. They definitely should be commended. Math, you can see the growth, again, even, you had very high growth, 49% of your students. Uh-oh, what happened?
No idea. Pretty good dudes here.
It's Murphy. Murphy's jumping in on me.
The kids from Jefferson.
The kids from Jefferson. Okay, here we go. Memorial Park math, also tremendous growth at Memorial Park in the 2018 scores. Achievement at the middle school in grade five, a really nice jump, 13-point bump from the previous year. Growth in grade five across the board, you can see the trend, and that's what you're looking for, is again, growth continually, continuous growth each year, and you see nice trend lines there. Growth in grade seven, again, similar, but they had a really good year last year. Growth in grade eight, also very strong. Achievement, high school biology, I just know how hard they've worked at bringing these scores up, and they bumped up eight points this past year. So I want to jump real quick to some other indicators. The MCAs are just one indicator of how well a school is doing. Test scores, to me, tell maybe 50% of the story. The other 50% of the story is told on Friday nights when you go to the football games and you see the kids participating and really living their life. That's the other half of what we do in the schools, but these scores are pretty important. The PSATs are very important, and when I came in 2012, one of the first things I asked was for the school committee to support giving PSATs to every student in grade 10 and 11 each year. Now, that's quite a commitment, but the information that comes from those exams is like getting a full, getting, it's like going to the doctor and getting a physical and getting a complete workup. And when you get the score report back for each student, it tells you, if you want to improve here, do this. If you want to improve here, do this. So it's just a great test, but it's also a test that's given to every student across the country. It's the same exam. So when you want to know how Rockland kids are doing, it's good to look at things that kids across the nation and across the state are also taking. So what we're seeing is, again, continuous improvement in these PSAT scores. They were up nine points in ELA in writing class of 2018, and you can read for yourself, but they're very strong. So all grade 10 and 11 take this. But one of the things I'm very, very proud of is, you congratulate John Eller III. He received recognition as part of the National Merit Scholarship Program. He was recognized because his scores were one of the 50,000 highest-scoring participants out of 1.6 million test takers. So he's doing exceptionally well.
One of the tests, he had a perfect score?
Perfect score on the MCAS math, from what I understand, yeah. But we're very proud of him and proud of his accomplishment. SAT testing is another area that we look at. If you look, what we're trying to do here is we're trying to, I'm looking at state average, in 15, 16, we were 29 points below the state average in ELA, and then 14, and then eight. We're closing that gap each year, and that's what I'm trying to show with this slide. And more kids are taking the exam. We had a slight decline in the number of test takers from the previous year, but SATs are more important the more students that take them, the more clear picture it gives you of how your kids are doing. If only your top 20 kids take the SATs, so what? They're your top 20 kids, they're going to do great anyway. So we want all of our kids to take the SATs. So we're constant, and that's what the PSATs are also lead to. I also wanted to point out advanced placement testing. This is something that we've worked very hard at, and this is not just to benefit those top 20% students. Having advanced placement courses in your school increases rigor throughout the discipline, whether it's math, English, science, any discipline. It just makes for a stronger curriculum throughout the district. What I'm very, very proud of here is the passing rate. When you pass an AP exam, when you get a three, four, or five on an AP exam as a sophomore, junior, or senior, or even freshman, we had Ronan McNally score a five as a freshman in AP Bio, which is remarkable. That score, your colleges will accept that, and they will waive a college course. We have students coming back and telling us that they've saved thousands of dollars, and more importantly, three classes for this gentleman's son. It makes a huge difference, a huge difference. So really pushing the advanced placement program at the high school has been something, it's been a personal mission of mine. You can see in 2009, we had 69 test takers. In 2016, we had 146 test takers, and we are offering 12 advanced placement courses. So very, very proud of what's going on in advanced placement. Next steps, I was going to spare this, but we want to continue our work with our strategic plan. We're in the second year of a five-year strategic plan. We're going to continue to support our new assistant superintendent and our new math coach. Both are doing exceptional work this year already. We have a new elementary reading program and writing program. It's really in its third year, so I don't know if you'd call it new anymore, but we're looking for those gains. So as you had asked, you know, what do I attribute it to? Well, part of it, I think Foundations is a phonics program. It's very, very important, and I think it's showing, starting to pop, our scores are starting to pop a little bit. We're going to focus on grade five and six math, where our scores were below and below state average. That really jumped out at us. Support our math coach. Target attendance, so chronic absenteeism, so anyone who's been absent more than 10% or 18 days hurts our scores overall. So my point to make is, parents, please, if you're scheduling a vacation, don't take a vacation during MCAS. That'd be, that's a given, but also encourage your kids to come to school every day. It sounds like I'm being sarcastic, but if you're not in school, you can't learn, we can't help you. And the correlation between kids who have attendance problems and kids who have school problems in general, it just jumps off the map. So if your kid doesn't want to come to school, let's find out why they don't want to come to school, but make them come to school at any cost. It's very, very important. And the state is recognizing that by holding schools accountable for attendance. So again, please come to school. Test stamina is a new issue for us, really. The multi-part questions, so we're actually practicing this with kids. It's hard for kids to look at a three-step question and actually have the mental stamina to really hang in there on a long question, and so it's something that we're working on from kindergarten all the way up through high school. And the high school is now transitioning to a brand-new MCAS this year. We don't know what it'll look like, but it is computer, and so there's always a little anxiety around that. I wanted to also throw in, you know, the evolution of our technology and STEAM within the Rockland Public Schools. It's something that we've paid a lot of attention to, and something that the Board of Selectmen and the town have been extremely supportive of, and I want to share some of that. In 15 and 16, we had one IT specialist, Lisa Ryan, and she taught classes to 375 students in grades three and four, and the curriculum included Google Docs, slides, coding, and code.org. There were 20 classes in coding. Engineering and robotics were in their third year at the high school, and robotics and coding were in their second year at the middle school. So that was 15, 16. 16, 17, the IT department, she continued, Lisa Ryan by herself, did 375 students in grades three and four, and the curriculum expanded to include coding with MIT Scratch. And engineering, robotics, and coding continued at the middle school. Now, last year, we hired a new STEM teacher for 17, 18. This expanded our offerings to reach 550 students in grades two, three, and four. It's a full-year, 40-class program, and it was expanded to include engineering challenges and robotics. At the high school and middle school, in addition to engineering, robotics, and coding, computer science is added for the first time. This was 17, 18. This year, we added a second STEM teacher, and again, this is a direct thank you to the town of Rockland for supporting, you know, our hiring of a new STEM teacher, our hiring of a math coach at the elementary, our hiring of an assistant superintendent for curriculum instruction. These things are paying off, and these are how we're using these people. We are now reaching 900 K-4 students with a full STEAM program. It's a five-year comprehensive program. The A is in STEAM, if people are wondering how STEM became STEAM. The A is for arts. I've gotten over it, now I just call it STEAM, but they can't change it again, because I can't deal with it. But it includes digital citizenship, more engineering challenges, and robotics. At the high school, computer science continued, but we added AP computer science. That is also a very, very big deal. These are just some pictures to show you what this looks like to our youngest kids, doing some research, and this is, again, beginning as early as kindergarten. Coding and robotics, this is what coding looks like before kids are actually typing on computers. Coding can be done in a multitude of ways, drawing a picture, making a plan. This is early robotics coding. These robots follow the colors, and the students have to design the task, and these are three very happy... And these are three very happy students who have just passed one of their levels. Conclusions. The improvement in student achievement is district-wide and occurring throughout the district. Of the twenty-five MCAS exams given in SY eighteen, nineteen showed improvement over the previous year. Improvement in reading in ELA currently outstrips the improvement in math and we, our hiring of an elementary math coach is expected to help. The significant increase in science scores at all levels, I think reflects the investment that the schools and the town have made in science curriculum materials. Special shout-out to the Foundation for Education who helped with nearly thirty thousand dollar influx of funds last year to help us get our new science program off the ground in the elementary. And this year's results are outstanding. At the end of the day, should be credited to our incredibly supportive town, our hard-working and talented teaching staff. I can't say that enough. We have an amazing teaching staff, very strong administrative team, and we just have the best kids on the planet. So that's it. Da-da-ta. Now, if anyone has any questions?
I just have one, our comment. I think just in general, our, for you to be here tonight, Dr. Cron, you know, like, all like in having this conversation and, and sharing the information that you just shared with us, I, I think it really speaks volumes to where, you know, the, like, we've all come during the past year and, you know, I just think it's very, oh, very exciting personally because we only have to look back, you know, like a few months and, oh, you know, our conversations were a different, shall I say. And, oh, you know what, to see us here, to see the dialogue we, you know, that we want to have with the school committee, you know, to all move forward together, I just, oh, I'm very excited that we can have this opportunity, we can have the conversation, we can have the information sharing and, and, and be able to, oh, really like share in the success. I mean, you know, I don't want to take any credit for the school department, but it's, I mean, like, it's amazing and it's...
You should, you know, the town, the town setting aside a hundred thousand dollars a year for technology, you know, are, it doesn't just happen accidentally. This is forward-thinking, this is planning, this is the finance committee recognizing a need. This is Tim Wells taking that responsibility incredibly seriously. He could account for every penny and tell you exactly how we've spent that money. Every penny. So you, you can take credit for it, this board should take credit for it.
So I just think that it's awesome that we're, oh, we've entered a new day, shall I say?
Good.
Thank you.
I just, I just appreciate, and I'll piggyback on kind of what Mike said, I just appreciate that you wanted to come talk to us. You know, you don't answer directly to us and, and there's a lot of other departments in town that don't answer directly to us that, you know, I wish would take the initiative to come talk to us and present. And the excitement that you have when you present your results, you know, it shows. It shows why the results are what they are because you guys are excited about it and you guys have made warranting priority to our students. So thank you for that.
Mike, I agree. And Dr. Cron, I want to thank you. In the short period of time that me and Kara have been on the board, this is becoming standard, to see a department come up and, and present. And I can't remember the last time that happened. And I think that we have turned a corner and as a town, we're, we're starting to, to go down that right path because at the end of the day, we're all in it for the same. You know, it's, it's one town. It's not, it's not every different department. So for the department heads, for you to come up and present, just seeing the enthusiasm, getting to share what, what you guys do on a, on a daily basis, it's just tremendous. And I encourage the other department heads who haven't come up so far, please do so. It's a great forum for you to, to talk about your department, talk about your employees and, and the things that you're doing. But it also allows visibility for the townspeople to see exactly what's going on and all the hard work.
Thank you.
Well, since they skipped over me and stole everything I was going to say, no, thank you so much. That was really informative and I'm shocked to see that MCAS is on the computer now. I mean, I feel like I haven't been out of school that long and it's...
Think about it, when...
It's a good thing, not a bad thing.
Well, third graders taking an exam on the computer, it still makes me a little nervous. They're all going like this and, and we're testing their ability to write an essay going like this. So we're, we're all chasing our tails, trying to keep up with change. But...
So I have a question on that. So I remember a couple of years ago when, when that first test came out, the park test, and I remember the scrambling of trying to find enough computers to have it done. Where are we from a, from a district to, to be able to meet the needs?
We're, we're doing, we're doing well. We're right, we're stretched right to the limit as far as getting a computer in everyone's hands. We just bought a hundred and eighty new Chromebooks. We, we really are almost one-to-one as far as number of devices and number of students, although we're not in one-to-one district. So kids don't get handed a Chromebook in, in fifth grade and they keep it, but we do have enough devices so that almost every kid has a device. But I will say, it's tough to keep up. They have five-year lifespans and we're getting six and seven years out of these devices. The older computers, again, Tim Wells and, and his staff are doing a great job fixing screens instead of replacing devices, fixing hard drives instead of... So we're doing, we're doing fairly well and we're prepared to give the exams this year. In the past, we've had to shift a lot of things around.
Yeah.
You know, again, every little bit counts. So daycare being successful, for example, has brought in some additional revenue. We're use, we use that revenue to buy additional laptop carts. We bought an additional thirty-unit laptop cart for each of the three elementaries that they use in after-school program and before-school program, but it also gets used during the day. So it all helps. It all helps.
Thank you, Ellen. I appreciate you coming up here. You know, one of the, my goals as a selectman for, since nineteen ninety-six is to get the schools to, I, I hate to use the word cooperate with us, but basically that's what we have to do if we're going to, you know, have a successful town. And quite frankly, I've seen the change in the attitude of the school people and I'm not talking about just, just, just this year, but even in past years, you know, I, I knew all the superintendent's names. I didn't in the beginning. You know, they just stayed over there, we stayed over here and nobody, you know, we got together at budget time and had a fight. Basically, who's going to get the money or who's not going to get the money. But, you know, the school is working with the town and we're working with you because quite frankly, if our children are successful, then our town's got a great future. If our children are not successful, then maybe it won't be so great. You know, we're going to have more people hanging around the street corners doing nothing. So, you know, I'm, I'm a guy that college isn't for everyone, but education is. You know, whether or not you want to become a doctor, a lawyer, or a bricklayer, or work in the union, or work in plumbing, or electricity, or whatever, you've got to know how to build people, you've got to know how to communicate with people, you've got to be able to take care of yourself. And you guys are doing a great job and we appreciate it.
Thanks, thanks for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cron.
All right. Let's see, we're going to review the warrant articles and I'm Rich Penny.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll turn you one second here. We're in special annual town meeting on January seventh. We have a list of articles that we have here and we're going to read them all to you. There's no money amounts attached to them yet because we haven't figured all that out yet and we don't really have to attach the final money figures to it at this point. But we want to let you know that we need a hundred and fifty people to come out on January seventh and take care of the town's business because if we don't have this, transfer of funds and everything, then, then we could go, become sort of bankrupt, I guess, and, and we slow the town down immeasurably until we get it all straightened out. So anyway, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Town of Rockland Warrant Special Town Meeting. To one of the constables in the Town of Rockland County of Plymouth and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town, qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet at the high school auditorium, Rockland High School Way, excuse me, Rockland High School, fifty-two McKinley Way. And that's on Monday, January seventh at seven PM. And we're going to need you all there. And the following articles, Article one, Rich.
Will the town vote to rescind its approval of Article fourteen of June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen special town meeting, which appropriated the sum of four hundred thousand dollars to purchase two fifty-eight Union Street, Lot thirty-nine dash three oh three, eighteen hundred and sixty-five square feet, or take any action relative thereto? The emergency, due to substantial increase in the asking price for this property and the cost of potential environmental studies necessary beyond the amount of funding appropriated, the Board of Selectmen is no longer pursuing the purchase of the property. Article number two, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund projected shortfalls in the town's legal budget? Due to multiple unforeseen legal issues that arose in May two thousand and eighteen and are continuing to the present and through the foreseeable future, the legal budget is facing a shortfall for the remainder of fiscal year nineteen. The additional funds were also necessary, were also necessary cover outside investigators and insurance deductibles. Article number three, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money, a sum of money to fund projected shortfalls in the Board of Selectmen and Town Accountants' budget? The amount requested is necessitated by unforeseen personal issues in the Town Accountant's Office and Town Administrator's Office. Additional funding is required to staff those offices through the end of the fiscal year. Article number four, will the town vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds a sum of money to fund recently negotiated collective bargaining, bargaining agreements between the town and its unions? The town is required to fund settled agreements at the next town meeting following conclusion of negotiations under General Law one fifty-eight. Article five, will the town vote to raise and appropriate a transfer from available funds a sum of money to the, to the reserve fund or take any action relative thereto? This replenishes the reserve fund for a transfer that was approved to the legal and accounting budget earlier in the year.
Very good. Is there any, anybody want to discuss any of the articles or to render any opinions or anything? I know we don't have any money at this time to attach to any of them, but we're working out the details and we'll have, should have it for you, one week, before the next meeting, maybe, next meeting, maybe?
We should be ready by the end of next week to have the warrant fully in place, Mr. Chairman.
The only thing I want to say is, it is extremely important that we get a hundred and fifty people out on January seventh. If, as Larry said, if we don't get the hundred and fifty people out, we cannot make these transfers and it is going to negatively impact the town. So I can't stress enough how important it is to get a hundred and fifty people out. It's not going to be a long meeting, but we need a hundred and fifty people minimum.
Yeah, I mean, to Rich's point, it's, it's not going to be a long meeting. It's, it's five articles. We all know why we're in this place, we're in this position. At the time we did the budget last year, we, we didn't budget for, to be paying two town accountants, two town administrators. We didn't budget for these legal fees. You know, and I think to, to address the first article, you know, we put that, the goal was to purchase that property. At this time, that property doesn't seem to be a viable purchase for the town and, you know, it's, it's an area we can go to, to address these other needs. So who knows what the future holds, but in the meantime, there's more important things than, than that property right now. So, you know, hopefully we can get the hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty people to come out. Last time we tried to do a special town meeting, I think we only ended up with a hundred and fifteen, a hundred and twenty people. And it was disappointing because we weren't able to get some things done, but this is really, really important that people come out and support this.
Anybody else?
No.
I'm just going to say that to the town, people of the Town of Rockland, your government needs you to step forward and become part of the process and part of the solution. We've been working our behinds off here for the last, since May, early May, going through some very difficult times, very difficult decisions based on what people have done against the Town of Rockland. So we are trying to make the ship right, completely upright, and we're getting there. And this will be the last, hopefully the last special town meeting we'll ever need on regarding any of those folks that passed before us, we'll say. You know, they, they, they didn't do the town justice, that's all I can say. You know, they talked a good story, but they never, never fell through. And quite frankly, we're finding a lot of little things that we have to straighten out in, in the Town Administrator's Office that we're completely done. So we need you, Rockland. Please step forward and help yourselves. You know, it's not, we don't get any benefit from this, not a dime. So we need you. So please come down and spend a half hour with us and either vote for or vote against. As long as we can have a town meeting, then the voters will speak. But we, we have to get a hundred and fifty there in order for you to do so. So that's all I have to say on it. All right, Town Administrators Report.
This is all new territory for me.
No, there's no vote. Yeah. And then we can give our recommendation.
Correct.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right, Town Administrators Report.
I don't really have much of a report for you this evening, other than to remind residents that the winter parking ban is in effect and all the details are on the town website. So make sure to check out the information on the website because we will be ticketing cars that violate the winter parking restrictions.
Very good. Board Selectmen's comments. Comments and opinions expressed by individual members do not necessarily reflect the views of the Board of Selectmen and are the opinions and comments of only the individual member. And I'm going to start at the dissent tonight, so Mike can get even with the other mic. Rich?
Nice, thank you. First thing, Council of Aging. They are in dire need of drivers for the Meals on Wheels. It's not a huge commitment, could be an hour, that's it. If you're interested, either go to the, the Council of Aging or you can give Peggy or Eleanor a call at seven eight one eight seven one one two six six. Rockland Holiday Magic, I know it's a little late, but their annual fundraiser is going on right now at the ninety-nine. So if you go there before ten o'clock tonight and get a meal, they will donate, I think it's fifteen percent of the check to fundraiser. And that organization, Rockland Holiday Magic, started by Ann Phelps and, and now continued by a couple incredible people. It does wonderful things for some families in town. Rockland High School Theater Guild, their play Arsenic and Old Lace, this Thursday, Friday, and Saturday at seven o'clock in the auditorium, eight bucks on the, at the door. You can order tickets online for five dollars. And Rockland Lions, tenth annual tree and wreath sale. So that's this Saturday and Sunday in the parking lot at Walgreens. Again, great fundraiser for an organization that does tremendous things for the town. So if you need a tree or wreath, go there Saturday and Sunday. Brian White said he'll have hot cocoa for people and if you're above twenty-one, he might add a little something in the hot cocoa.
Mr. Ola.
You know, I have no comments tonight, so...
Kara, please. Ms. Nyman?
Well, I was going to mention about the Holiday Magic fundraiser going on at the ninety-nine tonight. I hope you all aren't at home watching and I hope you're there supporting a great cause. I'm just finishing up my shopping for a family in need, so I think it's a great cause and I'll be heading to the ninety-nine after this, if anyone wants to join. Is that loud?
Yeah, that's, for my comments, I just want to piggyback on what everyone else mentioned like a few moments ago about the January seventh special town meeting and our, the chairman, Mr. Ryan, a few minutes ago asked people to come out and vote either way. I would really, and, and I'm, and like, I know we want to respect people's, our decisions, but I would really ask townspeople to come out and vote in favor of each article. Oh, there's really five of us here right now and three of us worked, oh, like incredibly over the summer to keep everything outgoing with a bunch of people and the, our crazy unpopular, our decisions, the angst, the stress that frankly, we've all had to deal with while doing that. And our, to make sure that the town as a ship kept moving forward, is something that I personally take a, like a whole ton of pride in, the, of the way that I was able to do that and the way that this board was able to do that. And so, you know, like I think, oh, we as a town and the amazing people who, who do the work here day to day, oh, have done their work. We've, oh, really, oh, worked together to keep the ship moving forward. And now frankly, we're asking the town and its residents... we're asking the town and its residents to come out to support us in our efforts, and to do your part to help to keep, to help keep the ship going forward as well. We're in a really good place as a town, so many positive things that happen, happening, and, like, I just hope to God that the people that are friends and that are neighbors, or they come out to support the job that we've been doing over the past six months, and that I know that our full board will continue to do. So, sorry for the soapbox, I just, you know, we've just...
We're all with you.
And all of us have taken this whole issue...
It's personal now.
It is.
Very, very personally, and if there's anything that I really, truly hope we've done over these past six months, like, it's earned the trust of the people in Rockland, because there's nothing else I wanted to do, so I'll leave it at that. So, thank you.
You go. Being last, of course, you don't get a real lot to talk about, and these people have very, very graciously said all the right things, quite frankly. But I just want to remind people that the Rockland Fire Department has a Toys for Tots, and, you know, the usual, bring a unopened present to the fire department, whatever age group you want to do it, donate it to, and then they'll make sure that the appropriate people get them. They do a great job every year on this, and you can't ask for more than what the people of the Town of Rockland put out for people at the holiday season, especially who don't have anything. So feel free to stop up at the fire department, and feel free to give to whatever your favorite charity is. It's, you know, we used to collect, I used to collect money years ago when I worked at the Quincy Hospital, and we would collect five, six, seven hundred dollars, and it would just be handed to, you know, at the door, open the door, hi, Mrs. Jones, yes. You have seven kids, yes. Merry Christmas, turn around and walk away. That's what it's really about, you know? Not about how, who did what to whom, it's how did people end up on Christmas morning? Happy, healthy, dead? A lot going on with that stuff, but, anyway, I'm off the soapbox for now, too. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and listening to us, and we'll be back here in two weeks with some more...
Motion?
Oh, yeah. I'm getting there. I'll have an entertaining motion.
A week of motion, two adjournments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.